Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call the City of Titusville City Council Special Meeting, July 12, 2025, at 1:00 PM to order. You would please take a moment for a moment of silence for our invocation, please. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I believe we have a quorum. Do we have a quorum, Mr. Stokes?
Yes, sir. We do have a quorum.
City Clerk, would you mind reading the rules?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on the agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under public comment. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items, and all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the City Council shall be placed in a box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. As stated earlier, the purpose of this special meeting is to evaluate the applications for the position of City Attorney. This morning, each member of Counsel was able to individually meet with each candidate applicant, and during an interview process, that process has been completed. We're now moving on to the special public meeting phase, in which each candidate will be brought to the collective City Council, interviewed again, and prior to any discussion of City Council, public president will have the opportunity to provide input to the collective City Council.
Thank you, City Manager. Member Nelson?
I'm going to make a suggestion that we have each candidate come up and introduce themselves before we start and allow us to ask questions.
Thank you very much, Member Nelson. Before we talk to each applicant individually, we're going to kind of discuss rules of engagement from a City Council standpoint. It's what we're going to do now. No, it's not listed on the agenda, but HR made the strong suggestion that we should ask the same questions of each candidate here before them, before us. So the question I pose to the board is, how do you want to handle that? We have about 30 minutes that we'll have with each candidate. If we break it up evenly, that pretty much allows like two questions per Council member with a lot of time for response. So if that's the way you guys would like to do it, I'm also open to suggestions, but I think the key is consistency in evaluating them on the same questions. Member Nelson?
That would work.
All right. So I would, you know, ask, we all agree that we each ask two questions, and then we'll, each person will ask those same two questions of each candidate, and we're all good with that. Member Stokel?
Yeah, my only question would be, will we have a chance after the applicants leave the room to make sure that we're not duplicating questions up here? So I might have two questions I already outlined, but they might be the same as somebody else's. So I guess my question would be, do we have an opportunity to discuss what two questions each person is doing to maybe help critique each other's questions, to make sure we're asking solid questions and not being redundant?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. If you guys are fine with that. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, whoever goes first will probably get the, you know, either the easiest or the hardest job in terms of question to ask, because you gotta go first or whatnot, but...
Yeah, I don't know. I just, I would want it to make it smooth for our applicants, too, that, you know, they're not getting asked a duplicated question and feeling kind of put on the spot, so...
Well, if it's duplicated, there should be a similar answer, unless it's, I mean, I think then if it is a similar mindset or philosophy, then maybe you can get a little bit more into the weeds, if that is, you know, something that's very important to you, but at the same time, I don't want anybody on Counsel to feel like they didn't have an opportunity to ask the question that they wanted to ask. But again, I'm not making the rules. It's for us to decide the rules. I'm just helping facilitate the conversation. Member Nelson, did you have anything to add? I heard you kind of make a noise.
I was thinking out loud.
Yeah, yeah, I heard it.
Yeah.
I wasn't even looking, and I heard the face.
You've known me too long. My thought is that I understand wanting to have the same question asked of each applicant. However, in certain cases, there may be specific questions for one applicant which would not apply to others. So from that point of view, I do have a problem with it, because I think that...
I, okay, I hear you on that, and I understand. I guess when I was meeting with staff, and some of the concerns I would have is if we're, that could, we could be accused of not being fair to all applicants. So why did you ask this of one applicant, but then not of the other? And that was potentially a pro or a con. So I think maybe a way, if we could broaden the question, whatever it may be, and then we are able to ask follow-up questions, if something arises from that, I think that was a way around it. If we had like four to five set core questions as a board, and then if, when they're answering, if something in the response causes a follow-up question, I think that would be okay and fair. But to say, okay, this candidate, we're going to ask these questions, and then this one's, I feel like we could get ourselves into potentially some legal trouble.
I can, I agree with that, but obviously, they have different backgrounds, and so there may be some questions that are appropriate for one candidate, but aren't appropriate for another candidate. But I agree, the core questions should pretty much be the same.
Yes, and when I suggested two questions, it was just, again, a starting point. It wasn't to say you can't ask follow-up questions, or elaborate, or explain in more detail. So Vice Mayor Cole?
I just think we need to be consistent. I agree with Member Stokel that we need, now, the answers to the questions that they give may make us think of other questions that we have to ask as a follow-up, but I think we need to be consistent across the board with the questions that we ask each one.
I mean, if you would like, if we're not sure, I could ask the same four questions, and then allow you guys to do follow-up questions, as just a general philosophical questions. I mean, again, it's up to you guys on how you want to do it, just for consistency purposes. Again, I'm just thinking. But, Member Nelson?
Okay. So one of our applicants worked for DCF. The other three did not. So would I ask the applicants that didn't work for DCF, what did you do for DCF? What do you think that experience contributed to your growth? I mean, you...
So, and I thought about that. My, and I guess this is feeding into one of my potential questions I was thinking of. Describe your background with public and private sector, and how do you feel like that equips you for this role?
Right.
And then a follow-up question to that answer could be, can you explain specifically with, if you needed to, but at least let's make it broad for everybody?
Okay.
And go that route, and then...
And that's, that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so where do we land? Are we each asking two questions, or am I just asking a broad question, allowing you guys doing follow-up?
I think everybody's asking two questions, and if we need follow-up, then we'll do that.
All right. I'm just making sure I know how to conduct an effective interview with multiple people. That's all I'm trying to do. All right. So with that being said, we all got the rules of the road. Thank you, candidates. It's been a pleasure to get to know each one of you guys today, and I believe Attorney Treasurer will be the first one up. I'll ask the other candidates to give us some privacy, please, which is odd to ask for in this setting, because there is no privacy. City Clerk, could you start the timer for 30 minutes? I want to make sure we're equal and fair to all parties, so I'm going to open up a discussion with Attorney Treasurer here for 30 minutes, and if Counsel wishes to extend the time, please just make a motion to extend the time. Counsel can do that, but I'm just trying to make sure it's even playing field for everybody. Sorry, Jolene, I forgot to give you a heads-up about that. All right. It looks like Member Nelson would like to go first, so I'm going to let you have the floor.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Attorney Treasurer, for the record, just generally.
Okay. And I will, I will say this to the rest of the members. To me, having somebody who is equally adept at litigation and transactional affairs is important, because if somebody is proficient in litigation, they'll understand the rules of evidence, they will understand what it takes to win a case if we need to, and they will also know when it's important to have outside counsel. So, Ms. Treasurer, can you describe your experience and talk to us about litigation?
Yes, absolutely. I've had the fortune of being exposed to litigation throughout my 24-year career as an attorney in various areas. The first was my first job out of law school. I was the staff attorney for the 15th Judicial Circuit, which is working for 52 judges. So I got the litigation experience. Initially, I got into a courtroom, which is what litigation is essentially, is you're an attorney practicing litigation in the courtroom. So I got the exposure from the judge's perspective, actually, which I think is very important, because that is the decision-maker in any of our cases. So I think first and foremost, I have the experience working as a litigator, viewing from the judge's perspective what a judge looks for, and how to write and draft a final judgment. After that, I got the fortune, or some may say misfortune, of working with the Department of Children and Families, which is my passion, child advocacy, and working for children and child welfare. And there, you're, you walk in the door, and you get 100 cases per caseload, and so I've had to litigate those cases, dependency cases is what we call them in the field of law, which is taking a case from its inception, when a child is removed from their home, all the way up to where the case is resolved. So I've had the fortune of handling a caseload of 100 cases for over six years, litigating, going to mediation, filing motions, taking it to trial before judges. They were bench trials, not jury trials, but I've had, like I said, the experience of practicing litigation continuously for six years straight. In addition to my current role as the Assistant City Attorney for West Palm Beach, I'm on the litigation team, where I handled all, where I handle all the litigation outside of personal injury and employment law cases. That, the cases I handle as far as from a litigation perspective include, but are not limited to municipal ordinance violations, code enforcement violations that are cited by code enforcement officers and/or police officers. I also handle all the cases, litigate cases regarding foreclosures, real estate property damages, declaratory actions, injunctive relief. So I'm essentially a part of the litigation team and actively participate in litigation there. Even though I'm not, I don't do the personal injury or 1983 police officer cases, I am a part of the team, and we go over those cases twice per week, and we provide legal input, legal analysis, and so we work as a team. Like I've said, I think in my interviews, I'm an Assistant City Attorney for a city that handle, that has 15 attorneys. It handles most of, if not all of, our cases in-house. So not only, if I were to be offered this position, come as a single person, but I'll also bring a team of 15 of expertise that I can reach out to on any litigation matter. And just real quickly, I also, when I worked for the city of Riviera Beach, I was the Assistant City Attorney. It was just a two-team office, but I also handled the litigation matters in that team that were not outsourced.
So how do you feel about working on cases in-house versus outsourcing them?
I think I, because of my litigation background, my initial, I would be well-versed in knowing what can be handled in-house based on my expertise, not only personally, but also what resources I in-house can reach out to, to handle those matters. I'm generally personally a frugal person, so I would err on the side of not wanting to outsource as much. However, there are cases, depending on the risk and the subject matter, that may need to be outsourced. But again, coming from a litigation background and litigators, we think we can handle most things. That would be my general rule of thumb.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Vice, oh, sorry, Member Muskoso.
Thank you. It was a pleasure speaking with you today.
Thank you. Likewise.
Thank you. So we have faced some high-profile legal matters in recent years. Can you describe a time when you helped a city navigate a sensitive or a high-stakes legal situation, and how did you manage communication with both the public and the officials?
Currently, without going into too much, the city of West Palm Beach, we have quite a few high-profile cases. One specific procurement matter that was handled, that was very much a high-profile media case, where we disqualified a bid, there was a bid protest based on the disqualification of a bid applicant. The matter was sued upon, and the city lost on the substantive areas. However, they were, the opposing, the applicant or the person, the plaintiff suing us was awarded $1 million in attorney's fees, which of course is an exorbitant amount of money, and we have appealed that. Again, internally, I think, in any case, internally, you want to assure your client, which would be the city as well as the council member of the law, you want to strongly advise them, give sound legal advice, so that internally, in addition to any media cases, usually, you know, the answer is, we cannot discuss an ongoing legal litigation matter. So that's the pat answer. However, I understand that there is always interest, rightfully so, of the citizenry of a city. I just think you have to have that balance in providing information, but understanding ongoing litigation matters is confidential to a point until it's resolved.
Did you have another question?
So my second question would be, are there any particular cases or litigation that you are proud of?
I'm most proud of, even though it's not municipal-oriented, but in my 24 years, I'm most proud of one of the first cases I handled, and judges usually, I worked for the judges, and they usually tell you, this is how I want to rule, make sure I'm ruling correctly, or make it happen, or, you know, write the order. And I wrote the order. It was appealed up to the fourth DCA, which stated that we were erroneous on our order, an order that I wrote, never, needless to say. However, it was appealed to the Florida Supreme Court, who agreed with the order, and as such, the legislation was changed as a result.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Cole?
So because of the size of our legal staff, which is two, there, we do outsource. Just give me a brief indication of your experience working with lawyers outside, and how do you rate, how would you rate them?
It's twofold. I've worked in a city where it was just the city attorney and myself as the Assistant City Attorney. In addition, currently, I work within an office where there are 15 attorneys, so I've been able to be exposed to both sides of the coin, where you want to take everything in-house, or you want to outsource everything. Now, this particular position would be the smaller avenue, of course. I think I would, one, need to see the infrastructure of how many cases we have, what it is that is being handled internally currently, and it's a matter of, again, you know, I will always be cautious in outsourcing cases that I believe that I myself can handle, or another Assistant City Attorney can handle, because I do understand hiring outside counsel can be very pricey, to say the least. So I think I would just have to know more how the infrastructure is currently set up, what cases we have, what can be handled internally, and again, a lot of cases do get settled. And I believe initially, a city attorney and an Assistant City Attorney could take cases up to settlement without having to outsource it at the inception.
So basically, if varying departments have different legal things that they have to work with, what would your system be to prioritize these needs for these different departments?
I first would have to gather the information of what the needs are, and then I would prioritize them. Usually, anything that's court or litigation affiliated, because those are ran on a judiciary or judge's timetable, you want to have those to the forefront. For example, you don't want a hearing set next week, and no one shows up for the city, or if it's outside counsel, that may not be needed, and it can be housed internally. So I would always want to see what's the fire as it pertains to anything litigation that's court, that's court-triggered. At the, at the same time, I do know there are internal, whether it's employment issues, employment law-related issues, or internal issues that also may have fires going. You just want to identify them as soon as possible to make sure that there is no further ongoing risks posed for the city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Stokel?
Yes. Hello, good to see you again.
Hi, thanks.
Okay, so my first question is, can you share an example of a piece of legislation as, in terms of an ordinance change that maybe had a significant impact on a municipality that you've worked for?
Yes.
Working in partnership with the city manager and staff?
Yes. When I worked for the city of Riviera Beach a few years ago, I think the city wanted to implement, it had high-crime areas, and the city wanted to implement a curfew ordinance, which then was not very popular, and I know still, there have been some litigation that have knocked down some curfew ordinances, you know, in recent times. However, I was able to work from scratch on a curfew ordinance, like I said, a few years, few years back, that was enacted under the municipality, which the city found correlated with the decrease in crime rate that it was trying to remedy at the time.
Okay. Thank you. And then my second question. So say we have an agenda item. It's coming before us as counsel. It's regarding a land use, which is legislative. It has a rezoning, which is quasi-judicial. Can you explain your approach of how you would best help prepare council members regarding this agenda item?
Currently, in our office, all agenda items coming up are reviewed by the city attorney's office to make sure that the laws are, so I would pretty much, I'm saying the example that that's something I would implement here as well, is to identify, so the city attorney's office usually has to sign off on agenda items that's definitely involved land use issues. So that's something I would implement that should trigger some involvement with the city attorney's office. In addition to looking at the agenda item, conferring with staff, to making sure that not only the statutes are in compliance, are complied with, but also our local ordinance are complied with, so that once the agenda item reaches the board, you guys are well-versed and equipped, and provided as much knowledge as possible in order to rely on what, to vote on. In addition, the city of West Palm Beach currently, we have a gender review, which is a few days before, and so again, any questions or any issues or matters, especially with land use issues, because there's so much, and always will be development, those issues are fleshed out at that time, so that the board, the commission, you, yourself, the council members, will be fully equipped on the matter and well-versed on the law that would be applicable to the matter.
Okay, and then a follow-up to that. So say you are doing your briefings one-on-one with us, and you find that I, you've got, it's gone through you, it's sound, it's legal, but I don't like it. I'm not liking this item. Can you describe what your approach to that would be? If I'm leaning towards that of how you would best advise... If I'm leaning towards that of how you would best advise me as a council member?
I would advise you as to the law. Again, you know, your opinion or your position, or anybody's, council member's position and viewpoint will be their own. I can only advise you as to the law, as well as any ramification that may result if you go contrary to the law.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I too enjoyed our conversation today.
Thank you, likewise.
You know, hopefully, you know, the day will end quickly. But how would you explain a controversial legal position to the public in plain language?
I've always prided myself as an attorney that I'm very relatable, as well as I've been taught earlier on, legalese are overrated. My fellow colleague may attest to, but legalese are overrated. So, I like to be concise, and I like to use the plain language, especially if someone is not versed in legalese. So, my, I always believe in effective communication, and therefore, if there's a controversial issue that the city is faced, I would try to be as concise and as plain, using plain language that can be comprehended as much as possible.
Thank you very much. How do you balance legal requirements with public opinion or political pressure?
Thankfully, as an attorney, I'm only responsible for the legal part of this equation, if I were to get the position. So, again, I have always prided myself in providing thorough, sound legal advice to my clients, whether it's a commission or a counsel, or someone who is representing as a domestic violence victim or survivor. So, once I've advised of the legal, of the law, and of the legal ramifications, the decision-maker, my client, makes the decision.
Thank you very much. We still have some time left. Is there anything you would like to add about your experience, your background, that you feel it's important for not only us to know, but the public as well?
Sure. First, I want to say I thoroughly enjoyed the interview process so far. Thank everyone for accommodating me, and the food was great, and the conversation even better. I have been an attorney for 24 years. My passion is public service. I have served the public willingly and happily. Like, I've not regretted not going into private practice, I've been recruited accordingly, I've been told by judges, are you crazy, you should, you know, make some money. But again, I am, I'm very much into public service. I look forward to continuing and being a team member here, if offered the position, in providing public service, that I know all of you are here, we're here on a Saturday because we want to serve the public, because we want to do good work, and I look forward to it. And thank you for the opportunity in letting me interview for this position.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any follow-up questions from what you asked earlier, or anything else you'd like to ask? Member Nelson?
It's not that I necessarily want to ask an additional question. I just want to say it was a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you. Likewise for everyone. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, really appreciate your time.
May I be excused?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Yes. I'm not a judge, so I'm not used to excusing people. Yeah, exactly. Member Muscoso?
I would like to add one of the applicants mentioned, and don't worry. Would, when we, I know next week, we're going to be interviewing the city manager positions. If we decide to choose someone today, would that person, if they're available, be able to interview? Because city manager and city attorney are going to work closely together, would they, would we be open to having that person be in on those interviews as well? So, it's just something to think of, we don't have to discuss it now, but I did think it was a valid question, because that is a really important relationship, and we want to make sure that whoever is chosen, that they also can form a good relationship.
Thank you. All right. How you doing today?
Good so far.
I know, right? Long time no see.
If you wouldn't mind just giving a brief introduction, name, and whatnot, and then we'll kind of get into the questions. But I want to give everybody an opportunity to hear as we make this transition to the next person.
Sure. My name is Michael Rodriguez. I am currently the chief assistant city, chief deputy city attorney for the city of Palm Bay. I bring 28 years' experience in local government law, both in the public and private sector, having served both in a county function as well as in municipal function, all in the state of Florida.
Thank you very much, sir. Member Nelson?
Same question. And we spoke about this. To me, having some litigation experience is invaluable, and hopefully will save the city some money. So, can you tell us about your litigation experience?
Well, for me, litigation, and in a local government context, I like to always give the story that I was basically given a baptism by fire. I will never forget my first day on the job as an assistant county attorney with Martin County, that'd be Stewart, south of here. I'm a law, I'm a doe-eyed, lost, recent graduate of Vermont Law. I sit at the desk, and I have the deputy county attorney walk into my office, he throws down a large complaint, and he says, oh yeah, Michael, by the way, in 30 days, we have to argue a motion to dismiss. And I'm like, oh, okay, so I guess I have to draft a motion to dismiss. Three years later, I actually tried that case in circuit court. It actually was a case of renown, and actually, we had a property owner decided to build a mega McMansion right up against the busiest public beach in Martin County, Bathtub Reef, technically a really popular beach, which got washed away during the storms in 2005. And he sued the county for nuisance, because his wall was five feet from the parking lot. So, we did try that case. So, that was my start. I assisted in litigation in Martin County. Some of the most preeminent land use litigation and cases in the state of Florida actually emanate from Martin County, with one of the most famous ones being the Pinecrest Lakes case, which involved the demolition of an apartment complex that was built in contravention to the county's comprehensive plan. But my litigation experience is also not just limited to local government law. I mean, it's, I also, during the interim, when I wasn't necessarily practicing local law, local government law, and land use law, especially during the foreclosure crisis, I was a partner in a national law firm, managing attorney, managing associate attorneys, and representing mortgage servicers during the foreclosure crisis. I have that distinct, or maybe undistinct distinction, of actually physically trying cases in 40 of Florida's 67 courthouses. So, I became very familiar with the entire state of Florida. So, I like to think of myself as having a varied law practice in regards to litigation. Now, my litigation has wound down since those days, but it is an experience that I have, both in either if I need to manage litigation for this city. I still do litigation in terms of code enforcement foreclosures for Palm Bay. I recently completed, we've completed, I completed four, just because that's what I've been given by the city, four foreclosures, which we actually took to judgment, and I'm very proud of the fact that we went from filing our complaint to receiving final judgment from the Vauxhall County Circuit Court, it took us six months. Three of the four properties were actually sold at auction to third parties, resulting in the properties actually now becoming rehabilitated, and actually now becoming functioning in properties that can be rehabilitated, resold, and now becoming actually increasing value and providing a tax basis for the city. Did the same thing in the city of Apopka when I was the city attorney there. So, in that regards to that litigation, as well as assisting in appellate work for my local governments, both in Volusia County, city of Apopka, Palm Bay, and in private practice as well. The last action I did in private practice before I returned to the public sector was I represented a group of property owners in the city of Hialeah, down in South Florida, in a land use challenge, in which an apartment complex was actually being built in one of the last remaining large vacant parcels in the city of Hialeah, surrounded by a single family. Now, we did not prevail, because it is, if you're in the private sector, the way the law is set up is extremely difficult to challenge a comprehensive plan amendment because of the standard of review that is set up under the law. But it still resulted, we had a three-day administrative hearing for an administrative law judge of the Division of Administrative Hearings, in which we did get some concessions from the city, and it was a contentious hearing. We did get some, we did not prevail, but I believe we did get some successful results. And for me, it was a little bit rewarding, because that neighborhood happened to have been my grandmother's neighborhood, neighborhood I grew up in, I used to ride a tricycle there when I was two years old. I recognized that neighborhood, I knew the neighborhood like the back of my hand. So, to actually represent some family members in this challenge made it somewhat kind of special. And to introduce that aspect of the law that I'm so passionate about to them, and then they actually saw what I did for a living, and then they wondered, how the hell do you do that? But that's something that I bring that passion, and I would bring that passion here, to the city of Titusville as your city attorney.
So, my question would be, how would you determine if a case should stay in-house or go out?
It's really going to depend on the complexity of the case, the expertise that is necessary. Also, depending on, I would need to examine what it is in, while I was city attorney in the city of Apopka. There were many cases that came to us that the subject matter was one that we reviewed our insurance policy, and that was something that was actually covered under our policy. So, those are matters that were then referred to our insurance council and covered under our policy. So, while outside counsel was hired, it wasn't something that we had to hire outside counsel and covered by our legal budget, it was covered under the premiums of our policy. And therefore, they took the lead, and I supervised the cases. I mean, two of the examples, we had a challenge to an affordable housing project that ended up being covered by our insurance council, and as well as a, there was a personnel appeal in action that resulted in a hearing for the Division of Administrative Hearings. That matter was then ended up being referred to our insurance council, and they handled the matter. So, those are two litigation matters that may, on the surface appear, that would then be referred out to outside counsel, but in the end, fell under our insurance policy. So, outside counsel was handled, but it did not incur, we did not incur additional expenses, because they were covered under our, the risk management pool. So, we were able to still use outside counsel, but not incur additional legal fees. And that's something, it would be an examination of what we have as part of our risk management. Just such an examination of that, there's ways that you can still accomplish what you need and save a few bucks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Muscoso?
Hi. You might have just answered this, but I'll ask the question in case you want to add anything to it. Are there any particular cases or litigation that you are proud of?
Well, it's, as I said, I did mention earlier, the one case, I mean, it's kind of hard to be proud of something that you didn't win. But there is something to be proud of putting up the good fight. And I believe I did put up the good fight, I put up an honorable fight. As a personal note, what made it interesting was that counsel on the other side, who represented the developer, happened to have been my best friend from high school, he is my daughter's godfather. So, going toe-to-toe with my high school debate partner as opposing counsel, the first time and only time we've ever gone head-to-head, it was a nine-month process from beginning to end, and when we finished, we both vowed to each other, we would never oppose each other in court ever again. So, that was one case I was very proud of. But also just the day-to-day work of being able to do the public's work is something that I believe I'm very proud of. From the simplest things, when I was in Volusia County, one of the first things I did to write the, write the resolution that would, that staked the county's position in regards to their opposition to the bear hunt in 2017. I was very proud of formulate that, the resolution and the arguments that the county prevailed. I was very proud of working on the Volusia County's work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in regards to the sea turtle habitats on the beach, and the agreements and cooperation with the federal government that the county has, which permits beach driving in Volusia County, as well as, so it creates that balance to allow the residents of Volusia County to still enjoy the beach and enjoy beach driving, but at the same time, protect natural resources, and what really people come and enjoy to the beach, especially during turtle hatching season, to, for folks to enjoy the Marine Science Center and those things. Those are, those are aspects that I am very proud of the work I have done in the past.
Thank you. And then my second question would be, we have faced some high-profile legal matters in recent years. Can you describe a time that you helped a city navigate a sensitive, high-stakes legal situation? And how did you manage communication between both the public and the officials?
Well, as I noted when I met with all of you individually, one of the most important things, if I were to become your city attorney, is that I have always had an open-door policy. I request, I don't want to say demand, but I expect that each one of you would come to my office and ask any questions, and be candid with any issues or any questions you may have, sit down with however long it takes, and we will break down the issue, and I will break down those things that are of concern to you, and make those things clear and concise to you, so you can be able to eloquently espouse your position within the parameters and guardrails of the law. So, that is, that's my primary objective as a city attorney. As I normalize, I state repeatedly, and I state this everywhere I've ever been, as a city attorney, my duty is to provide legal counsel to the city council. I am not the sixth council member. As city attorney, I cannot, will not, and will never dictate or create policy. I am your legal counsel. My job is simply to advise you, provide you the options, advise you, if you take this route, this may happen, if you take this route, this may happen. Here are all the options, you make the decision. I do not make the decision for you, I do not tell you what decision to make. It is not within my parameter, it is, the city charter does not give me that authority. So, I would break those issues down for you, in order for you to make a well-informed, well-rounded decision within the parameters of the law. In dealing with that with the public, it would be as best as I can to explain and to break down what will be in regards to how my subject matter would be, could be highly technical matters and technical legal matters, as best as I can break them down. Sometimes the public sees a lawyer, and they shut things down, because, oh my God, the legalese is going to kick in. So, I have had times where I have, I've had members of the public, usually, I've been in places where it's the policy where the city attorney's office does not interact directly with the public, because the city attorney is legal counsel for the city council, for the governing body. And we are not the legal counsel for the public. We are not the public's attorney. We are, we are the, I, this office is the attorney for the governing body, and we represent the governing body. But we will, I will provide certain clarifications. I have had, in the past, some, a member of the public once try to ask, try to get clarification on an issue. I have sat down with them over the phone and explained it, try as best as I could, in a layman's term, to try to clarify an issue, to clarify it. I mean, at the end of our conversation, I think this member, this resident said, you know, I don't agree with you. I said, that's fine, I don't want, I'm not here to convince you or otherwise. But he did appreciate that I took the time out of my day to explain the position of the city council. He actually came to the next city council meeting, and a public comment actually praised my work with him, and how I presented the issues to him in a professional and concise and respectful manner. And I did appreciate that. So, that's, that's, you know, if a member of the public is going to come and speak, and is looking for clarification, in a respectful manner, that would be something that it's, we can have that discussion as far as clarification. But I think the primary objective and the primary goal is that I serve as legal advisor and legal counsel to this governing body. And that is, that is my job, that is my role, and those are my duties under the charter of the city.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
You've basically covered how you would deal with outside counsel from Member Nelson's question. And if you want to elaborate on it further, that's fine, but the second part of my question would be, how would you measure the outside council's effectiveness?
Wish I could make it a mathematical formula, that I could say, results divided by costs equals success. But I'd like to take into consideration the quality of the work, what I'm getting, I mean, really, it comes down to, unfortunately, it's, am I getting my bang for my buck? A lot of times, I can be quite disappointed with colleagues in my field, that, and I've seen it happen, where... that, and I've seen it happen, where, you know, I receive a bill from somebody, and I've got the time that I spent probably addressing an issue with them, and they've billed me 45 minutes for a phone conference that I know took me 10 minutes. I'm like, come on, dude. I used to review bills from associates when I managed a law firm. So I know that inner workings of business of the firm. But for me, it would be, I would best look to manage outside counsel if necessary. I want to see the results and that they, can they provide satisfactory results in an efficient way and use the resources provided to them by the city, which are the resources of the taxpayers, in an effective and efficient manner primarily.
Okay, without using a mathematical formula, how would you prioritize tasks across different departments, which all seem to have a high priority? You get that?
By tasks by different city departments?
Different city departments, yes.
I mean, it's going to depend on the subject matter that's presented or that's being dealt with. So, I mean, if want to use an example, let's say we have a theoretical land use litigation matter. So at this point, I'm going to want to use as best as possible our own technical expertise in-house. Because why would I want to go out and pay for experts if I have my own in-house experts? My planners know the best. My, my folks provide the best information I have. And therefore, can I use my folks efficiently at the best if I'm going to handle that in a litigation context? And then can I minimize, can I maximize the amount of time where I bring, to have my outside counsel if necessary interact or have to use my in-house folks efficiently so that we don't waste time, which is just going to churn the clock and result in expenses for the city that downright can be unnecessary? Many of the, maybe much of the preparatory work or the preliminary work can be done in-house and then be presented to outside counsel if necessary to finalize. And therefore, that way, we can, we can have those costs, which are a lot of the foundational work, stay in-house, where we can save some money and then have it be finalized by outside counsel. Perhaps sometimes the outside counsel, hey, they're the better ones. They look prettier in court. All the back work, preparation work done in-house efficiently and to the benefit of the taxpayers, and then have the pretty face in court finish the job. But that can be done efficiently. Those are various examples, various hypothetical examples without going into details or even knowing the facts that the best I can, I can illustrate ways that we can try to be, come up with unique and creative ways to try to maximize and increase efficiency in regards to the legal department for the city. But I would like to minimize the use of outside counsel. In Apopka, I was a one-man shop. It was just me. And to be honest, in the three years I was there, I never hired outside counsel to handle matters on a part of the city. Now, I'd like to think that I did a good job advising the city that we never got into major litigation that resulted in such actions that required us to go to outside, specialized outside counsel. But that was something, that was something that I did pride myself in, in keeping and running a tight fiscal legal ship for the city. And those times where we needed some assistance, I mean, we found ways to have it done without incurring additional expenses. And as I said, the only outside counsel that we did use was our labor counsel, who it turns out is the same labor counsel that you already use here in the city of Apopka. So if I were to become your city attorney, I think that would be a pretty seamless transition.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Member Sockel?
Yes, hello. And you may have already touched on this a little bit, but if you wanted to expand on it, can you share an example of an ordinance that you drafted yourself or you worked on with staff at a city that had a major impact on your community? And it could be one that staff presented and you saw there was a lot of issues and you needed to tweak it, or it was something you drafted on your own that impacted the community? There's probably a lot, but if there's one that comes to mind.
Okay, two come to mind, and I don't know why they came. The first ones come to mind, maybe one will cause a chuckle. One was backyard chickens, but maybe I drafted, I drafted two backyard chickens ordinance, one for Volusia County and one for the city of Apopka. Now, one of the ones that was most interesting, and this was, I'll call it interesting because in the end, it turned out to be a great cooperation, cooperative effort between the county and the, I won't say the public, but the industry, let's say. So in Volusia County, we had a rash, I don't call it a rash, but we had issues with a blow-up in the industry, what are normally called wedding barns. So folks who want to have the agricultural wedding experience. So we had these wedding venues that were actually barns. So what they did was they came in under the agritourism exemption under Florida statutes. Biggest concern we had, and it was mainly a concern from our fire marshal, was he was scared to death that we were going to have, they're having these wedding receptions in barns on rural areas under the state exemption, which allows it to occur. But these buildings were not properly equipped to handle 200 people at a wedding reception. And these are formal wedding receptions. His concern was, he was scared to death that we were going to have a Great White concert, the concert that happened in Rhode Island where there was a fire at the venue and hundreds of people died. His concern was, I am not going to have on my conscience someone's happiest day become their saddest day. So we did get some pushback from some of the industry who argued, no, you can't touch us. This is part of the Right to Farm Act. But the language in the statute gave the local government some wiggle room. Actually ended up working with the attorney who represented many of these farm owners. And I said, you know, I sat down with him and said, Mark, I think we can find some middle ground. Let's work together. And he's like, you know what? Yeah, Mike, we can. Let's work together. We sat down and we wrote and we created what was, what's in Volusia County called the Rural Event Center Ordinance. Created regulations, reasonably, reasonable regulations that allowed for these venues to be created to still allow for flexibility, to allow for these folks to develop their agricultural uses and have them have a side income stream, usually on weekends, where they can rent out their barns for wedding venues, for weddings, receptions, other parties. Once we got that passed, the number of applications for reviews for these wedding venues increased. And they really flowed very smoothly. And a lot of folks were very pleased that we, the county, is a case where the county actually set up the regulations and set up, implemented a system that was very efficient. Our fire marshal was extremely pleased that now he was able to keep track of these and make sure that these venues were going to provide a safe environment for, to house all of these people and to avoid a disaster, which he was worried to death was going to, was going to be on his conscience if he, if we didn't have something like this happen. So that's something I was very proud of. Like, you know, since then, I haven't gone to a jurisdiction where this has been an issue. This sometimes I think is more, it's more county-specific, especially in the county of Volusia, where you have a lot of rural area, and this came up. But that is definitely something I was very proud of. And as I said, involved cooperation with the industry, but also cooperation with other local governments. I mean, I went out and reached out to Elatua County and reached out on how they drafted. And a lot of times, I don't like to, there's no need in reinventing the wheel when it comes to a novel issue. If a constituent or a commissioner comes to me with a, and you guys come to me with, hey, I need, we need an issue we need to run an ordinance of, I like to reach out to my other colleagues throughout the state of Florida. Hey, you've done this before. What did you guys do? Let me see. And, you know, I've got a template bank from multiple jurisdictions in Florida on how things are done in order to apply them here and bring those forward. Because you don't need to reinvent the wheel. You bring that wealth of knowledge that already is in the state of Florida to bring that, bring that forth. So that's something that I would, I'd definitely bring to the city.
Thank you. We might have topped you. We had, during our chicken ordinance, we had somebody come dressed in a chicken costume to our meeting when we were doing that.
I can also, I will eventually tell you the story of the country music pigs in Martin County that I, fresh out of, again, I was three years out of law school. And when one of your code enforcement cases gets featured on The Daily Show, I'm thinking, oh, my God, what have I done with my life? And we're talking The Daily Show before Jon Stewart. We're talking The Craig Kilborn Daily Show. So I don't know if I just gave away my age.
Oh, boy. Okay, and then my second and last question. So as I'm sure you might be familiar with, a lot of the briefings that we have are agenda items involving a land use change, which would be a legislative item, and then a rezoning, which is a quasi-judicial. Can you just explain your approach on how you would help to brief council members on that agenda item and what they can and can't do?
Okay, that's my position on all of these, of course. One, I'd advise you, and I know you're aware, but sometimes a refresher isn't, you know, not hurtful, that, you know, the difference between your legislative review for a land use amendment and your quasi-judicial review for everything else, basically. Your rezonings, your site plan approvals, your development plan approvals. I was going to say planning, but that's now changed. Under the legislative review, your decision solely needs to be reasonable. So when you're doing a land use amendment, that offers you the most flexibility in whether or not you want to approve or deny. Because as long as your decision is reasonable, that standard is what goes forward if someone goes forward to challenge it. That's why, as I stated when I did my land use challenge in the city of Hialeah, it was that threshold that's so difficult to overcome if you're a resident, to overcome that challenge to state that something is unreasonable, that it's not based on any data or analysis. Especially when the courts have stated that the city can present the data analysis for the first time at the administrative hearing where you're challenging it. And that hasn't been changed by the courts. As far as quasi-judicial is concerned, my advice to every local government I've ever been represented is that your decision has to be based on competent substantial evidence. And that is primary. So whether you want to prove something or deny something, whatever that decision is, you have to base it on competent substantial evidence. So I've been asked before, well, I want to deny something. How do I get to that? Well, hypothetical example, someone presents their case. They've got a traffic study that shows that whatever this development is not going to have a negative impact on traffic. Well, if there is testimony with a contrary or another traffic studies, for example, that shows that there is negative impact, or there is some reasonable evidence that shows negative impacts, and it is evidence that sways you and you believe it is competent substantial, you're sitting as a trier of fact in a quasi-judicial board, then that, then your decision, if based on the evidence that was presented to you and that evidence swayed you, that would be sufficient to support your decision to deny hypothetically. And if we move forward in the challenge, that would be sufficient enough for me as a city attorney to represent the city, to defend such a challenge and defend it with such a straight face. Because when you're at the appellate level, the courts will not second-guess the judgment of the local government as long as that decision is based on that competent substantial evidence. So that's what you need to look at. Look at that evidence, look at, and really advise, and I would advise any of you, as again, when you were coming, I would advise you, look at what you, look at evidence presented to you. Look at your staff report. See what you want, see what you're looking to get to. And I can, you know, as legal counsel, I'd advise you, look at the questions you want to ask to get to what you need to do, to get to the information and facts you need to get to those conclusions in order to support your conclusion and support your finding that would be able to then withstand a legal challenge one way or another. And that's, that is what your difference is between the legislative review when, as legislator, you're just acting as legislatures. I mean, it's almost to the point you can just say, I just don't like it. Under a comp plan, as long as that's reasonable, it's going to withstand a challenge. Quasi-judicial, you have to, it's almost like at a trial, you have to, whatever you decide has to be based on the evidence that's presented before you. And it's, and it's, and it's really evidence that's on the record. You can't just, it can't come out of thin air.
First of all, thank you very much for all your answers. I have about a minute 30 left. And just to keep it fair for everybody in terms of time, so I'll just ask you one quick question. How would you balance the legal requirements with public opinion or political pressure?
My tenet in regards to this, and this is for everywhere I've ever been, especially when I run my, when I've run my own office as a city attorney. The office of the city attorney must, and there's no wiggle room here, must be politically independent. The office of the city attorney is to provide legal counsel to the board, the city council. If it's a county attorney's office, it provides legal counsel to the board of county commissioners. It is not the role of the city attorney to get involved in any of the political discussions, political disagreements that were involved, any of you. That's the political realm. That's not the legal realm. And I, and I shared this with all of you in our one-on-ones. If I'm the city attorney here, you pay me to provide you legal advice. And I am going to be candid enough that if we are discussing a matter and a question dips into the realm of political advice, I've done it before. I'm not afraid to do it. To tell you that's a political question, you guys have political consultants you pay, you ask them. But as far as I'm concerned, I am here to only provide you with legal advice. The issue of politics and political impacts, that's not for the city attorney's office to be concerned about.
Thank you so much, Michael, for your time. Really appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Yes. Well, we're actually to the point of an intermission that was scheduled. So we're going to take a break till 2:15. Welcome back, everybody. And now we're going to get up and rolling again with Mr. Scott McHenry as our next interviewee. And just to, I want to thank you for being here. Appreciate your time with us this morning. City clerk, you ready with the clock?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to give you an opportunity to kind of, you know, introduce yourself in just a couple of seconds, and then we'll get into some of the questions. Don't forget to turn on your microphone there.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and council members, for inviting me today. It was a distinct pleasure. I'm going to forewarn you, at this point in time, my voice is fading. So if you can't hear me, let me know, and I'll try to do my best and repeat the answer.
Thank you.
And as you indicated, Mayor, my name is Scott McHenry, and I'm here for the city attorney interview.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
Hello, Mr. McHenry. We discussed this before, and to me, having attorney experience in litigation is important. Important in determining how often we use outside counsel and, of course, keeping down costs. So can you tell us about your litigation experience?
Certainly. That's a great question. I'll try to make it somewhat short, because I do have a somewhat of a long work history. I think what is most relevant in terms of my background for this position is that in the private sector, I worked for a large AV-rated law firm in Orlando. The name of that firm was Dean Mead. Dean Mead also had offices in Brevard County, which I think is relevant also. But I started out at Dean Mead as a corporate transactional and contracts attorney. And during my period of time there, which was 12 years approximately in total, I transitioned into the litigation area and got a significant amount of litigation experience. After I left Dean Mead, I eventually decided to transition into local government. And my first job in local government was with Orange County, Florida. Just as an aside, my wife and I are 30-plus-year residents of central Florida. We live, we have lived in Orange County, Seminole County, and also Volusia County. Unfortunately, we have not had the pleasure of living in Brevard County yet. But after taking the job at Orange County, Florida, I immediately continued with my litigation practice. There was one notable case in particular. I can't go into too much detail about the case, because there are some confidential aspects of it. But the case involved Universal Studios as the plaintiff and Orange County, Florida, as one of the defendants. Along the way, 35 additional defendants, property owners in Orange County, were added to the mix. So yes, I have a significant amount of litigation experience. And that experience is as lead counsel, first chair at many hearings and trials. And the litigation areas are pretty much across the board. Another litigation area that I did at Orange County was eminent domain. And I probably had 25 to 30 eminent domain cases that I handled as lead counsel at Orange County. But in addition, over the years, I've handled many contract cases, litigation cases, personal injury cases. I had one big shareholder derivative suit. So yes, I do have a pretty, I feel, a pretty strong litigation background.
Without going into detail, can you give us a general sense of what the lawsuit was with Universal?
Certainly. The lawsuit with Universal involved Universal's now closed Wet n Wild amusement, if you will. And that was, was located in south of Orlando. And it was around a lake called Sandy Lake. And there was, located immediately to the south of Sandy Lake, property that had been developed by Orange County over the years. I forgot the exact number of property owners. But in the distant past, the city had granted Orange County a drainage easement so that Orange County could drain from its property, at that time still largely undeveloped, into Sandy Lake. And as those properties got developed, there was more and more drainage into Sandy Lake. And so the allegations in the lawsuit were that Orange County and the other property owners in Orange County to the south of Sandy Lake were overburdening, was the term that they used, the drainage easement. The specific, I'll just hit them real quickly. The specific counts involved trespass, nuisance, a request for injunctive relief. And there was also an inverse condemnation amount or count. And there were millions and millions of dollars at stake in the lawsuit. Luckily, over time, I was able to negotiate a very good settlement on behalf of Orange County and the property owners.
I might ask a follow-up question. You mentioned that the law firm you worked for was an AV-rated law firm.
Yes.
For those who don't understand that.
That's a great question, and I was going to clarify that during my prior answer. But the AV-rated rating is issued by a company called Martindale-Hubble. I believe at one time, they might have been associated with West Publishing. I'm not sure about that. In any event, they are the number-one attorney-rating organization in the United States. And obviously, they rate U.S. attorneys. And receiving an AV-rated, AV-rating from Martindale-Hubble is deemed to be very prestigious. And law firms themselves can get that rating, and individual attorneys can also achieve that rating. Just as an aside, individually, as an attorney, I also am AV-rated, Martindale-Hubble. The A stand, the letter portion of the rating is for legal ability, the highest being A. The V, the second letter, is for professionalism and making, and basically ethics ability. So the law firm that I worked for, as well as myself, have that highest possible rating, AV-rated. It's called pre-eminent. And then they have a little, another twist to it with some numbers after that. It's based on a scale of 0 to 5.0. The law firm and myself were both rated 5.0 out of 5.0. Thank you.
And if I can ask a follow-up question. You spent time in the Merritt Island office. Can you tell me how long, what you were doing there? That's a double question. How long and what were your duties at that point?
With respect to the Merritt Island office, my duties were litigation-related, once again. And it involved a number of different lawsuits in Brevard County. And that, as you know, based upon your background, Brevard County is part of the 18th Judicial Circuit, along with Seminole County. And by the way, I also handled litigation cases in Seminole County. But to get back to your question, in Brevard County, I would say the period of time that I handled litigation cases there was probably four to five years. There were a number of significant cases that I handled there with some of the well-known judges in Brevard County, who later on, based upon their abilities, became judges at the Fifth DCI District Court of Appeal. So they are, they were very well-known competent judges.
Thank you. I think that's all I have for right now.
Thank you very much. Member Muscoso?
Hey, good afternoon. Thank you for being here. I know you had a long trip. I really enjoyed our conversation.
Thank you.
On top of all your qualifications, you are quite funny as well. So I appreciate that. So you might have already touched on this, but are there any particular cases or litigation that you are proud of?
Well, certainly the Universal Studios case. Very proud of that. Actually, you know, as I said, it involved stormwater drainage. And so I learned about not only stormwater drainage, but also water law and permitting. I worked with some top stormwater drainage engineers. I worked with some top stormwater drainage engineers on that particular case that assisted me greatly. And I also learned about certain things that could be done with FEMA with respect to water issues. And so, the ultimate settlement in the case, which is a matter of public record, was via something called a LOMR, L-O-M-R, Letter of Map Revision. And so, actually, it was Universal Studios and their well-respected engineer that filed the necessary application materials with FEMA. And FEMA granted that application to be able to increase the level of water that could be drained into that Sandy Lake.
Thank you. My second question is, can you describe a time when you helped the city navigate a sensitive or a high-stakes legal issue? And how did you manage communication with both the public and officials? And if I could add on to that, what do you feel like is your responsibility of communicating with the public?
I may need you to repeat part of that question, but I'm going to launch into the first, the first couple of questions. And probably, I should just stick with the Universal case for ease of reference. That was a very sensitive, high-profile case. It was tried in the newspapers, primarily by Universal. And in general, as was our practice, Orange County did not comment on pending cases. It's just not something we did. But the case had a number of different aspects to it besides the actual legal case. And one of the things that made it tough was, you know, Universal's a great company. They're a great contributor to Orange County, very important to Orange County. So, at the same time that I was handling litigation matters, Universal, higher management, was negotiating with Orange County Administration, including the mayor, Jerry Demmings, and the county administrator, which, when the case started, was a very well-respected county administrator, Ajit Lachandani, and that changed to Byron Brooks by the time the case was finished up. But Universal met with administration, as I said. But myself and also my boss, the county attorney, Mr. Newton, also met with the mayor and the county administrator and the applicable departments on a regular basis to make sure that we kept them abreast and got their input on the case. So, did I answer all your questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Muskoso. Vice Mayor Cole.
It's a two-part question. And basically, what experience have you had working with outside counsel? Because, you know, you're being office two. And in working with the outside counsel, how do you, what method do you use to rate their effectiveness?
That's a great question, council member, and I'll try to do my best. While I was working in the private sector, I had the opportunity to work with outside counsel. And the litigation I was handling at that time was in a jurisdiction that I was licensed in, but the litigation also spilled over into another state, different jurisdiction. And although I became, was able to handle certain things in the other jurisdiction, it's called a pro hoc vice admission, I needed to retain outside counsel. And there were two or three cases that were filed in this other jurisdiction. So, I worked with probably three or four different law firms to help me with those cases, actually take the lead on those cases. You know, initially, I researched their backgrounds and abilities, and also Martindale-Hubble ratings, and also whether or not, you know, they were board-certified in particular areas in the other jurisdiction. But I made sure that I kept abreast of everything that was happening in those other cases. I had access to the particular clerk of court site to see what was being filed. I could download pleadings and other documents that were filed. I also required that they supply me with written reports, short-written report, on a monthly basis, so I could keep abreast and also have my superiors, who were officials in this particular company, management in this particular company, made them aware of what was happening, especially from a financial standpoint. Because a lot of times, I find with outside counsel, you really need to keep abreast of exactly what they're doing. And otherwise, the fees can get out of control. And the second part of your question, I'm sorry, did I answer both parts?
How do you measure the effectiveness? And I think you kind of went through that in your first answer.
Yeah, even though I wasn't licensed in general in these other jurisdictions, I have the litigation background across a broad array of litigation cases, where I can tell whether something that outside counsel is doing is going to have a positive effect in some manner, either to get the case settled, or to position it for trial, or maybe some interim pleadings, like a motion for summary judgment. So, I can tell, but, you know, whether the money is being spent wisely, just based upon my background. But in addition, as I said, I also feel it's incumbent upon me to keep my superiors, like I would with you all, informed on a regular basis. And going back to Universal Studios case, that's exactly what we did with county administration. We had, we had staff meetings. We had mayor staff, and we also had county administrator staff, and on a regular basis at Orange County. And during those meetings, a lot of times, I would make sure everybody was brought up to date on the Universal case. And it was sort of the same way, I'm getting off on a tangent a little bit, with Sun Rail. I think you know from my resume, I was also the Orange County Lead Attorney Representative on Sun Rail, the working group in particular. But I also, in addition, attended all the Sun Rail public meetings. I met with, you know, folks from Volusia County, Seminole County, City of Orlando, and Osceola County, to keep them, to help try to move Sun Rail along. And then, in like-kind, I made sure that Mayor Demmings and others at Orange County were kept informed as to the status of Sun Rail.
Okay. And my second question is, hypothetically, let's say you have competing legal needs from different departments within the city. How would you prioritize those different needs within the departments?
Well, I think in the, that's a great question. I think in the first instance, it might matter what kind of legal need it is, because, not always, but sometimes, if you're talking about, say, a construction contract versus a lawsuit. Lawsuits, in general, you know, might tend to be more time-critical with respect to certain aspects than, say, a, you know, design-build-construction contract, which I also handle. But putting all that aside, I'm one to, want to open up the lines of communication, make sure that everybody who would have a stake in one matter or the other, that we have a full and open discussion with all those parties, and I'm able to get feedback from all of them, I think would. And I would also discuss things from my standpoint, or if I have an assistant who can help, you know, their workload might, you know, be discussed as well. But bottom line, my preference would be to, if we otherwise have the competence, would be, and the ability and the time, would be to try to handle things in-house. And it would be only if, you know, we didn't, if it was a niche litigation area or something like that, and we were swamped with other more important things, then that same discussion or discussions might need, we might need to talk about hiring outside counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Stokel.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I'm up next. My first question is, can you give an example of an ordinance that you either helped to draft, or that one that came before you because of staff, and you saw significant issues with it, and maybe had to make some changes or suggestions that had a significant impact on your community?
Certainly, that's a great question, and I appreciate the question. And the ordinance that I'm going to talk about is another matter that I handled at Orange County that I'm very proud of. And that is the affordable housing ordinance that I worked on with the Housing Department and a person by the name of Mitchell Glasser, who's been around forever and is just, has tremendous knowledge in the housing area. But to back up just quickly, Orange County passed and approved a Housing-for-All Plan. And as part of that Housing-for-All Plan, which was an attempt to address affordable housing issues in Orange County, the county commission and administration decided that they wanted to set up an affordable housing trust fund. And this was a separate trust fund, and there were gonna, there weren't going to be any ship monies, state housing monies, that went into this trust fund. So, Orange County was committing, out of its general revenues, to put $10 million a year for 10 years into this housing trust fund to be administered in accordance with a separate plan that would be agreed upon, I think it was every two to three years, and then presented to the county commission, and they would pass on the plan and the expenditure of the funds that were in the trust fund. So, I was extremely proud of that. And I worked very closely, as I said, with the Housing Department. It went through a number of different iterations, iterations as we moved along. There were a number of different changes. I also have a financial background. I have MBA degree in LLM and tax. But that was another reason why I got involved with the Housing Trust Fund ordinance, because there were a lot of different financial aspects involved with that. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you very much. And then, my second and last question is, as I'm sure you're aware, part of our agenda briefings with our city manager and city attorney will be going over the agenda. And one of the key items, I would argue, that we get on there a lot, is a lot of land use changes and rezonings. So, can you explain your role in, we have one coming before us on the agenda, it's a land use legislative item, rezoning, quasi-judicial item. How would you approach prepping each individual council member on what they can and can't do?
Well, I would, first of all, get familiar with the development plan, or the rezoning, or the PUD, whatever that was being contemplated. And just as an aside, in one of my jobs as, working for, it was actually a variety of smaller local governments, not Orange County, I was the attorney for the Planning Commission for two of those local government entities. So, I would, I would sit, you know, on the dais during the Planning Commission meetings and help out the Planning Commission members. So, I would get familiar with the particular development plan, rezoning, whatever it was, to be able to, you know, inform the city council members of what was going on, the issues, and whether, yeah, that's about it, yeah.
Thank you very much. And again, really appreciate your time and our conversation that we had. And I know we only have a couple minutes left, so I just wanted to ask a quick question. How do you balance the legal requirements with public opinion or political pressure?
Well, the legal requirements need to come first, I think. And as you and I talked about in our meeting, I'm basically a legal advisor. I don't make policy. You all, you all make policy. So, the policy decisions are up to you. I, you know, may be called upon to review some of those contemplated policy decisions. If I see that there's legal issues, then I will bring those legal issues to your attention. I will also try to attempt to quantify those legal issues and the potential risk from those legal issues. And, but ultimately, it'll be up to the city council to decide to move forward or not. I also, in the past, I've, if called upon, I've suggested alternatives that might help to assuage or even avoid some of those legal issues. But, yeah, that's pretty much how I would handle the situation.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I know we're almost out of it here with us. Is there any final thought you want to leave with us?
No. Once again, it was a pleasure being here today. It was, in fact, a rare, real honor. And, yeah, I thoroughly enjoyed meeting with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. You just need to push the little button.
Great.
There you go.
Thank you.
You are live. Again, we kind of went over everything. You're unfortunately, got to be the last person to come before us. Apologize for that. If you wouldn't mind giving your name and just a brief introduction, and then the council members will ask questions.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Cockcroft. I am a board-certified attorney in local government law, 21 years' experience in local government law. University of Florida graduate in law school, and have represented 10 to 12 municipalities in my career, as well as about six years as a felony prosecutor. And I also
And I also have represented other entities through outside counsel, so I have public experience and private experience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Member Nelson.
Jennifer, you know what I'm going to ask. One of the things that concerns me is we're using outside counsel a lot. And so my question to you is, can you describe your litigation experience to us?
Okay, thank you. So I started my career as a felony prosecutor, as a senior assistant DA in Atlanta. So I did have about six years' practice in criminal litigation. During that time period, I tried about 60 cases. Since moving back home to Florida, I have been a city attorney essentially. In my role as a city attorney, day to day, we generally handle all variety of matters, as you know, from council agendas to contracts. And as a city attorney, I've handled small claims matters. I've handled foreclosure matters. I've handled nuisance abatement matters. Generally, complex litigation has been handled by outside counsel, whether it's covered by the budget of the city attorney or else through the carrier, be it. I've had carriers such as PGCS and the Florida League, which have handled tort actions in 1983. Some city attorney's offices do have more than one attorney. And in that instance, sometimes you can have your litigation in-house. Currently, I'm in a position where I'm a one-person office, so there's not a lot of opportunity to be able to handle litigation. Thankfully, knock on wood, don't have a lot of it. But it has been my experience that generally, you may need somebody who's an expert in a matter to handle, and that may require outside counsel.
Okay. So my second question was going to be, how do you decide what to keep in-house and what to send out?
Well, generally, after essentially more than 20 years' experience in this, you can have a good gauge on what's going to be a complex matter. I can tell you that in the past few years, I've had one litigation case that needed to be sent out that wasn't handled by the carrier. And during my time at Kastini, where I worked for 10 years, we had just a few that went out. I'll tell you, I don't generally rely on outside counsel, but it is good to have that as your backup if need be, particularly in a small office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscosa.
Thank you, good afternoon. So we've had some high-profile legal matters in recent years. Can you describe a time when you helped a city navigate a sensitive or a high-stake legal situation? That's the first part of the question. And the second part would be, how did you manage communication to the public and also to officials?
Let me think of a high-profile one. Well, we have a certain person that may come before council frequently and is involved in litigation with us. So I personally have a policy that the press is generally just best handled by a public information officer on behalf of the city and that the attorney's office isn't generally in the business of providing that public information. So for me, getting involved in a high-profile matter would not be my role, other than to guide the council and staff. And so that's how I conduct myself behind the scenes. And I feel that's the best route legally, to make sure that the interests are protected and the city's best represented.
Thank you. And then my second question is, do you have any particular cases or litigation that you are proud of?
I mean, I'm just proud of my, you know, career overall, becoming board certified and, knock on wood, not having, you know, gotten myself into trouble along the way, knock on wood. I'm not a high-profile type of girl, I think. I'm professional. I conduct myself with decorum and provide the best legal advice that I can. I'm proud that I've, you know, been able to have a successful career and continue to do that without, you know, being in the news. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
In your role as a city attorney, and I think you've touched on it with Member Nelson, but how do you deal with your outside counsel? And how would you go about rating how effective they are?
The outside counsel?
For you as a city attorney?
For me as a city attorney, I would generally, so I do have quite a few connections, right? Having been a city attorney for a long time, like Mr. Stokes, you know, having dealt with him prior, we have a lot of connections through the local government community. And so I would only rely on somebody that I trusted and knew their work product. I currently use an outside counsel for complex matters. And, you know, I definitely am involved in the strategies and the pleadings and review them before they get filed and give my input on everything. So I definitely have a lot of control over that.
And if you have competing legal needs within the city departments, and they all seem like they're a high priority, how would you prioritize those?
So I have good communication line with the current city management, and that's how I've worked throughout my career. And it's good to consult with upper management to make sure that those needs are prioritized, right? Because you'll need to prioritize council's needs and upper management and then also staff's needs. And you have to be able to prioritize them and make sure, which are really ultimately the highest priority for the city overall, not just what staff in that instance may believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Member Stokoe.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so my first question is, can you share an example of an ordinance that you worked on primarily or you drafted? Or maybe one that staff presented to you that you saw might have a lot of legal concerns that you made edits to that had a significant impact on your community?
So I've worked on an awful lot of ordinances along the way. I, you know, recently, we did a new mixed-use one. Oh, and also garage apartments. So I did have a lot of concerns on the restrictions that they wanted to do. It would have had some implications with respect to short-term rentals and those preemptions that we face. So I definitely had to be involved a lot on that. I believe it had come from a consultant initially that had prepared it. So I had to make a lot of changes with respect to that as it went, you know, from first reading and planning board review and then council's first and second readings.
So follow-up to that. So how did that process go? Was there a lot of pushback? Were you able to come to a consensus by the end of it?
Sorry to cut you off.
No, you're fine, you're right. That's kind of the general idea of what I was wondering.
Right, I generally work well with staff. You know, we have good working relationships and respect for each other. I feel it's important not to get emotional. And, you know, we're doing our job the best we can, and there's no need, you know. I mean, we could have different opinions, but at the end of the day, you know, you work to find out the best result for the, you know, community. So, you know, nothing serious, really, I mean.
So you were able to get your changes into the ordinance? And then was there any pushback from the council members? Or did you come to a consensus?
We all had, you know, we came to consensus. We can have, you know, differing views, but, you know, as long as you communicate the rationale behind it clearly and explain to them what the law is, how it applies, what the risk and the implications might be if you go out on a limb in the wrong way. But, you know, I haven't had a lot of pushback on that. I did face a scenario when I was outside counsel with some pushback on some advice that I gave. But ultimately, you just give the advice, whether they choose to take it is ultimately up to the client.
Yes, thank you. And then my second and last question would be, as I'm sure you're aware, part of what we deal with on council is our agenda briefings with the city attorney and city manager. And a significant portion of that, I would argue, are land use changes and rezonings for our community. So say we have one on the agenda. It's a land use change, which is legislative, and then a rezoning, which is quasi judicial. How would you approach briefing each council member on that in your one-on-one on some of their options and what they can and can't do?
Well, I presume you handle these relatively frequently, but I'm happy to meet with council whenever you'd like to explain, you know, how the process would work with respect to the rezoning and the land use change and the different ways that it would be evaluated under your comprehensive plan and under your code of ordinances. And I'm happy to meet with you on all agenda items as often as you like.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. And again, thank you for being here with us today. How would you explain a controversial legal position to the public in plain language?
Well, any opinion that you'll get from me, I hope that you would find that it would be in plain language. That's the type of person that I am. I am pretty succinct. I will send you opinions that are, you know, I try to cut to the chase. There's not a need for a whole lot of words if you don't need them. I find a lot of times people don't read all of that anyway. But with respect to the public, I don't feel like it's the city attorney's role to be the spokesperson for the city and to provide that information to the public. I feel like it's my job, if I'm your city attorney, to give the information to management or the appropriate person for dissemination through the appropriate channels. I personally don't feel it's the city attorney's office. But if given other direction, I'll talk to you about it.
Thank you very much. And how would you balance the law with public opinion or political pressure?
Right, well, the law is the law generally. You know, we face criticism as public officials, obviously, because we have constraints. And, you know, they exist in our statutes and the law, we know. And we can just do the best that we can. I, you know, it does become difficult at times, but that's, you know, what we're here for as public servants, I guess. The law constrains us, and we just do the best we can to serve our communities and our citizens the best we can within those constraints.
Thank you very much. And we still have some time left. So is there anything you would like to share with us as we, you know, start considering who we're going to select?
Thank you. So in that lines of being succinct, I guess, we got extra time. No, I just thank you for having me here today. It's been, you know, a pleasure to be here. And I hope that, you know, your city continues to move forward in good ways.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much.
City manager, we're moving to 4B, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Now, be appropriate to address any public comment cards.
All right. Yeah, for me, Ms. Jolyn.
Yes, sir, we have three cards. The first is Jessie Wright.
Good afternoon. I'm here as a developer, excuse me. I'm here as a developer because I've had some experiences with a previous city attorney. Number one is that I understand that we all have to respect the sunshine law. I get that. But the fact is, it is important that any developer, not just me, to be able to sit down with the city attorney and also with the mayor and the city manager in the same room to discuss a project, whatever the project is. But in the past, during the diesel time, there's been time that the city attorney basically asking the mayor to not talk at all. And sometimes the view is that if the city gives a developer comments in terms of which direction the project can actually move forward, that would be helping the city and also the developer. The second point that I'd like to talk about is that I've had these type of meetings in multiple cities, in Birmingham, Alabama, in Crossville, Tennessee, in Nashville, Tennessee, in Fresno County in California, in Jackson, Mississippi, South Haven, Mississippi. These are, cities are with population of about 500,000, 200,000, 1.3 million in Nashville. And it's been very, very productive when a developer sits in a room, in a conference room, with the city manager, with the city attorney, and also with the mayor to discuss things. This is not the old-fashioned way of the developers, you know, paying money under the table or anything like that. Those days are gone, you know, long gone. The other thing that I think you should consider is that the city attorney should look at the project in terms of the size. You can't just look at opening a restaurant, which is like about 4,000 square feet versus 200,000 square feet. So I think there should be some discussions in terms of how much time is going to be spent on this type of projects. And you drive on the freeway, you see a semi truck. It's a fairly large truck, not just a small little one. And then the last thing is the, I hope that there is no, I've got 20 seconds. I hope there's not going to be any issues in terms of city attorneys feeding any other attorneys outside. In the past experience that I had, and I'm not insinuating to anything, is that there was a situation of the city attorney with his brother.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Tony Shuffalo.
I wasn't sure of the format for this Shuffalo Tropic Street. So what I'm going to do is just go over the notes that I had as I read through the applications, resumes, and start with the person that I think is definitely a no for this city is Cockcroft. She's not willing to locate where does she live. She's making $162,000 now salary, but wants the full $225,000. Working in Sebastian, I still wonder where does she live? And she sees that Titusville is viewed as an opportunity for advancement. Unfortunately, she worked for the firm that has my least favorite attorney, Rizanka, from 12/22 to January of '23, one month. Why even, you know, what was that about? And she wouldn't answer whether she has a driver's license. And lately, she's jumped around a lot to different jobs. So her work history shows serving developers in all the different places that she's worked. Whereas Treasure, on the other hand, has been in West Palm Beach for over two years as an assistant attorney. And before that, she helped citizens, not developers. She worked for the Florida Rural Legal Services and the YWCA working on domestic violence cases. And she spent some time doing work for childcare centers, making sure they were compliant with state law. So she has a work history of serving citizens. Now, as for the two guys, I don't know how you're going to decide between them. Rodriguez was very personable in his resume. He was very forthcoming and very upfront about things. And even though he left Apopka after threatened with litigation, he is still using the mayor of Apopka, Brian Nelson, as a reference. So there must be something more to it. And I'd like to know about McHenry. He worked with Orange County with the EPA and the Florida DEP regarding the Clean Water Act. In what capacity? Whether for the county for clean water or for the state trying not to? And I wonder also, has the staff met with these candidates? They're going to be working with them a lot. And those are just my issues. I would like to see you, please, do not vote for Cockcroft. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
The next speaker is Dwight Severs. He has a handout.
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs. You don't need to pass that out.
You don't need to pass that out. Resident of City of Titusville and former city attorney. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. The appointment of city attorney in my mind and believe is one of the most important opportunities and responsibilities you have to guide the course, destiny and reputation of the city. Obviously, this is your decision. I make no recommendation. My input to you is from my perspective as representing 50 different council members, seven different city managers, and never been asked to retire or resign. I speak to you as well as an AV-rated lawyer for more than 30 years, as a city attorney who has been nominated as a finalist as City Attorney of the Year in 2005 with the Florida League of Cities. I have spoken at the annual conference of the Florida League of Cities and have had an article published in the City Attorneys Magazine. As an attorney, I've been recognized by the Supreme Court for my provo service. And in addition, I have acted as and served on as the chairman of the Disciplinary Committee in the 18th District Circuit for Lawyers. For the salary range you have posted for this position, you should expect an attorney to have the experience, expertise, and ethical and legal abilities to handle most all cases and not outside counsel. That attorney should competently represent you and the city and show independence and leadership and not live by the motto, staying under the radar. And to speak up and protect you and the city and to live by the rule of law. Likewise, your attorney should have the kindness and compassion where appropriate to communicate with citizens. Last Tuesday, when I was trying to finish up some remarks which are applicable to your attorney's selection, I have no agenda other than what is in the best interest of the city. I believe in high ethical and moral standards, transparency, and communications with your citizens, including the fundamental right of fair play and following the rules. As a person and as an attorney, I believe in my baptismal vows, which are to resist evil, injustice, and oppression, and to believe in the basic tenets of my faith, which is to do no harm and to do all the good you can and to love God and your neighbor. And Sarah, since I have 30 seconds, one of the interesting, if you had asked me that question, what was one of the interesting ordinances had an impact on the city? I had the burden of responsibility of drafting a pornography ordinance of the city. The city, for all these years, has never had a bottomless, topless establishment in the city limits. And you have to blame me for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Severs. City clerk, is that all the cards?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Well, now I'm going to open up the floor for discussion amongst council. And I'll, Member Nelson?
I'll start. I have to say, I enjoyed meeting all the attorneys. They were great. And there were several of them that would be great for our city. However, my number one pick was Scott McHenry. I'm sorry. I believe he has a lot of litigation experience and litigation experience in dealing some very high-profile cases. He has the experience in dealing with data agencies. He comes from an AV-rated law firm. He's AV-rated. And I'm very, and he has a tax degree, which basically means instead of sticking, running away after law school graduation, he stuck around for taxes, which, in my opinion, you have to be crazy to do that. But he stuck around and got his LIM in taxes. So I'm very interested in his take on the Affordable Housing Plan. I would like to see his look at it. I think he has the temperament to lead us in a good direction. So that would be my number one pick.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole?
I have, well, in my mind, and I'll tell you what my number one pick is, but I have a system where we could use, it might make us easier in our selection, where we fill out a form with our number one, number two, number three, and number four selections, and then we add up the number ones, the number twos, and number threes, and then we come up with the first. But we also have someone, in the event that the first can't take it, we get the second. And my number one choice is Michael Rodriguez.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Stokel?
I'll go next. This was, I'll be honest, a tough decision for me. I, this is my first time going through it, and I didn't really know what to expect. I had very good conversations with all four, and I was thoroughly impressed, actually, with our candidates. Like I said, I didn't know what to expect. We didn't get as many applicants as I had anticipated, so I didn't know. And each of them, throughout my interviews, I realized has a wealth of experience, which is important to me. And then I started thinking about, as a council member, what do I think would help me the best to help our citizens and lead the city? Because at the end of the day, and some of the applicants alluded to this, what is the role? That was one of my questions I asked in the one-on-ones. What do you see your role as a city attorney? And primarily, at the heart of it, I think, is to give sound legal advice. I'm not a lawyer, and I need somebody to give me the best information, that's as thorough as possible, to make good decisions up here that we face. So a couple of things that I was looking for. Who do I feel confident in protecting the city, protecting taxpayers and citizens, like, as a whole, to give me enough information to do that? Who do I trust to give me legal advice? Who's not afraid to fight? One of my questions I asked, which I thought was interesting, it just kind of randomly came up, I had a question on, like, there's a scale, you know, attorneys that, no risk whatsoever, please do not do this, I don't want to go to court, versus over here, bring it on, let's go. And so, like, where do you fall on that scale? So I wanted to see where they felt comfortable on that. Another question I had related to, and how I was trying to figure out, because I think sometimes we ask questions to dig deeper and see deeper things, understand, are you able to understand varying perspectives to come up with good solutions? So not only perspectives of citizens, of staff, of the legal field, of council, but even when we all disagree. Like, how do you bring that together and how do you give sound advice? And how confident you are in understanding your role as a city attorney versus being part of us or being part of staff? Where does that fit in? And do you understand our role and what we're doing? I mean, that came up from, I think, all candidates as well, as they are the legal, we do the policy. And I think that's important. So, like I said, I was very, actually pleasantly surprised with most of my interviews, and my top choice was Michael Rodriguez.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Mascozo?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of having Mr. Severs sit in with me, and we asked a lot of really tough questions and a lot of hypothetical questions, which was really helpful. I was really happy with all of the applicants that we did get. My top two would be, I think we'd be lucky to have either Mr. McHenry or Ms. Treasure. But if I had to pick, my number one would be McHenry.
Well, I guess it leaves just me. You know, again, can't say enough about Joe and his team finding us a good pool of applicants. I know when we saw the number, and it didn't, didn't sound like a lot. Everybody was like, what are we going to do? But as we've gone through this process, I think we've realized that, you know, it's hard to pick and choose when you're separating, you know, some of these bodies of work go back quite a long time, you know, and what do you prioritize over this or that or the other thing? So, you know, I would definitely be okay with Mr. Rodriguez or Mr. McHenry with that. I think Mr. Rodriguez, if, no offense to Rob down in Palm Bay, but if he can handle Palm Bay, he can handle us. And that's a bigger city, so. I know it's on TV, and you're going to see that now, but, you know, still, we're not Palm Bay. So I would definitely be excited to have either one of those two as your city attorney. In fact, like I said, it's splitting hairs. I think there's a lot of great candidates, excuse me, in the pool here. At the end of the day, it's what council wants to do. You know, again, I don't think we're all going 100% agree on this is the person, given the great candidates we had. It's just, again, sometimes it's personality, sometimes it's this experience versus this one experience. So, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion for anything, you can do that. Member Nelson?
I agree with Member Cole. It would be good to be able to rank them. So my motion would be to rank Mr. McHenry as number one. And then let me go through the list.
That'd be your rankings, right?
Well, I was just going to, okay. I was just going to start off with number one and then go to number two.
What my suggestion was that we write them down on a piece of paper, put our names on them, pass them forward, then add up the number ones, the number twos, the number threes, and number fours, which I think would be a little bit easier.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion.
And then if that is the motion made, and we are going to do the rankings, then are we all going to then make the top ranking binding? So that would be the only challenge with that, Vice Mayor Cole.
The other option could be, sorry to interrupt you, Mayor, could be, we make a motion for a top choice, and then we make a second motion. If that person can't be there, we make another motion for a second choice.
That's what I was thinking.
I would agree with that as well. I don't like the idea of ranking to four and five.
I don't either, personally.
Okay. Well, I would probably be ranked fifth, as a non-attorney.
You would get ranked fifth.
I know.
Yeah. So my motion would be that number one should be Mr. McHenry.
I second.
I just have a motion and a vote for Mr. McHenry to be the next city attorney. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Member Mascozo?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
No.
Vice Mayor Cole?
No.
Member Stokel?
No.
All right. Member Stokel, your light was still on. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I was, for sake of what I feel like I'm hearing, is I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Rodriguez would be our top choice for city attorney and Mr. McHenry would be our second choice for city attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All right. City clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Member Nelson?
I don't know if I want to be first.
You're first.
Discussion, and I can, I want to maybe clarify, maybe, part of my thing, again, and I know, Member Nelson, you and I have been on the council the longest here, is what I think helped me to make this decision is having both the public and private sector, when I said, understanding various roles. One of my biggest frustrations during council meetings, and this has been in the past, is I thoroughly want somebody that's not afraid of us potentially getting sued. I want to be prepared, I want to be equipped and know the risks. And we've had numerous times in here where we've denied something, and an attorney representing a developer gets up and says, we'll see you in court. And I personally want someone that's not afraid of that, if that were to potentially happen. And Mr. Rodriguez was my top choice of, that would make me feel the most comfortable with that. So that is why, to clarify why, that is my number one choice.
And so, can I say that the reason that Mr. McHenry was my number one choice?
Yes, please, please share, yes.
Is one, you have an AV-rated attorney who is not afraid to take on universal. And if you take on universal, you've got nervous steel. So he's quiet, but I think he is one of those people that draws a line in the sand and don't you dare cross it. So that's why he was my number one choice. I don't know if that helps or not.
It's your vote.
At the end of the day, it's your vote. And I would also say it is a big difference with the level of support with Orange County Legal Services versus what small department we have in terms of taking on an entity. I mean, I get that. We're obviously, I think, all looking for a lot of the same things. It's just whether we saw them in that particular interview, you know, again, is very subjective. But I do have a motion on the floor and a second for Mr. Rodriguez to be the number one ranked choice, with Mr. McHenry being the second ranked choice. So is there any further discussion?
Yes. So I would like to also kind of explain why Mr. McHenry would be my number one choice. And I think we are all looking for the same thing. I think it comes down, in a sense possibly, to the method of how it's going to be done, because we want someone who is going to stand up and to speak up. And that was the thing I was looking for, was someone with a, who would even stand up to council, stand up to me and say, you're not doing this right, or give me really solid legal advice. And I do think Mr. Rodriguez, you would do that as well. I was happy to hear that McHenry was also the Member Nelson's number one choice, because my hope was also to default to, since she is the one with legal experience here. I do not have it. That's also why I asked Mr. Severs to come with me, to kind of see what their opinions were. And so that also helped me form mine. And so I kind of want to pay respect to what you've done and your experience as well.
To follow up with that, can you maybe explain what happened in your interview that made you feel that he was the best choice? Because I hear you mentioning Mr. Severs, but what, I guess, stood out to you that made you feel that he would be able to take on that fight potentially?
Yeah, so we actually did talk about the Martindale-Hubble rating, and so we had a really good discussion on that. And I mean, he has the top rating possible. And so I think that is huge. I think he has a lot of experience, and I really love his calming presence. And I think in this moment, right now, we do need a calming presence. And so we do need someone who will stand up for us, but someone who is calming, and I really sensed that with him. He just answered a lot of the questions. We went through a whole list of all of his experience. I mean, if you look through the list that you have on your paper, we went through all of these questions. I did like that he did not want to get involved in anything political. That was very important, and I appreciate that. And I heard that from many candidates as well. And just, I just felt like he has a lot of knowledge and he has the desire just to serve. And so it was just a great interview. Many of the interviews were great. So I think we have a lot of good options on the table.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole.
Well, I can justify that I thought, I think both of those candidates are very strong candidates. After I evaluated that aspect of it, then I looked at personalities and how I think I would be able to interact with the individual. And that was my reason that I made Attorney Rodriguez my top pick.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Any further discussion? Member Nelson?
I just think, I'm aware of the law firm that he was working for, and they are a super great law firm. I never knew him. I knew people within that firm, and they are a very reputable firm. And like I said, he's a tax attorney, which means that he's going to be even more attuned with the financial aspects, I think, of our city moving forward. And super interested in an affordable housing plan, because God knows, we need affordable housing. And I think he brings that to the table. So that's my reasons. I like Mr. Rodriguez. He's a lot of fun. But I sort of agree with Meghan in that, right now, I would like us to have somebody Mr. McHenry reminds me of- Mr. McHenry reminds me of a guy I used to work with. And when I would get excited way back and go into his office, he was our chief assistant, and I would be just, excuse me, but bitching and moaning and mad as all get out. Oh, yeah, there was one attorney in the office that just could push my buttons. And he reminds me of this guy, and I'll tell you his name, Wayne Holmes. And Wayne would just sit there and go, mhm, 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 until I was done ranting and raving, and then he was just very calm and resolved the problem. And, you know, right now, we seem to have a lot of people growling and not happy. And to me, that kind of demeanor says a lot and brings down the temperature. So that, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Member Nelson. I think affordable housing sounds great. I really wish we had the $10 million over 10 years to put in a trust fund. That'd be nice. But any further discussion? All right. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, and if you'll allow me to clarify, this is for Rodriguez, number one, and McHenry, number two.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the vote we're calling. Member Nelson?
No.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
No.
Motion carries.
I would just like to say that I think we would be way ahead with either one of these individuals, because the majority of the interviews I had, we had some really strong candidates. And I don't think anybody should feel bad, feel bad if they weren't selected, because the competition was very strong. And I really appreciate the fact that, that they came and they want this job in Titusville. So I don't know if they can hear me, but I want to thank them so much for coming in and submitting their resumes and subjecting themselves to us.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Member Nelson, do you have something to say?
Especially subjecting themselves to us. But I enjoyed meeting all of them. They were great individuals. Did a great job. So.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Congratulations to Mr. Rodriguez. Next step is to have Human Resource Director sit down with Mr. Rodriguez and discuss the terms and conditions of an employment offer, which we will bring back to the city council for their approval on, at the July 22 meeting.
Thank you very much. Petitions and requests from the public? Seeing none, kind of motion?
Wait, sorry. Just to bring up what Member Moscoso said earlier, did we want to, since we do have Mr. Rodriguez here, see if he wanted to participate next weekend, if he's available, with the hiring of a city attorney, to be able to interview, or just at least offer that to him?
City Manager?
City Manager, yeah.
Sorry, yes. Sorry, they're getting mixed up at this point.
So.
Or just extend an invitation?
Yes. I mean, I think it'd probably be good for them to be a part of the public hearing, just like anybody else, as somebody to, to watch and observe. But at the end of the day, I think they, you know, while they do need to work well together, when we're looking at hiring somebody that's making, you know, $200K a year and years of experience, I hope they would have the professionalism to work well together. But at the end of the day, I think they're each different.
They are.
Of city council hires, and not one working for the other.
I would agree.
So I, I don't want any idea of, you know, oh, I was hired before you, type of thing. Or city managers sometimes have a tendency to bully city attorneys, so, you know.
Very true.
Don't think that's going to happen.
Just as a professional courtesy, if he can't make it or doesn't want to make it, that's fine. I just think that us as council, we should offer that to him to be able to be here.
Yeah. Member Nelson?
I would make a motion to dismiss, but I sort of wanted to address Ms. Shifflow's remark. You realize the beginning of law school, they give us a problem, and we have to be able to argue both sides of the problem. So you see developers and attorneys come in for developers, and then come in for the city. And it's the same with criminal attorneys. We can argue for the prosecution, we can argue for the defense. That's our job. So, yeah. So I will make a motion to dismiss.
We're adjourned. See you next week.
All right.